I'd like to call to order the October 3rd, 2023 regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Mazumudio, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So, we have a quorum, we have a full board tonight. And I'm gonna move to the consent calendar. Is there any questions or any concerns with this calendar? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept it as printed.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Good, good to go. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move forward to item D, D1, which is PP-2023-02. This is a request by Jay Bates on behalf of Wright Homes LLC to subdivide approximately 20 acres of land into 15 1-acre lots for the Homestead preliminary plat. Property is located at the northeast corner of West Road 3 South and South Road 1 West, Chino Valley, Arizona. Anybody been here, talked to anybody about this?
No.
On the board, on the commission? Okay, so this is something we've heard before and the zoning commission did approve it the last time it was here, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we have a new improved version, is that what we're dealing with?
A minor change. I will be showing that in the submission of the applicant's preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you. Well, one more housekeeping thing, which is kind of a rough way to say welcome, but Jessica Barrigan is serving before us tonight. It's the first time she spoke before us, she's the town's new senior planner, welcome.
Thank you.
And Jeri Ann Froberg, correct? Is our new process coordinator. DeeDee has retired and moved on to do more fun things than said here. So, welcome. Okay, Jessica.
Thank you, Chair, for that introduction, Vice Chair and fellow commissioners. Again, my name is Jessica Barrigan, Senior Planner for the Development Services Department. Before you this evening, as mentioned, is a request for the preliminary plat, case item PP-2023-02 for the Homestead subdivision. As you may or may not recall, this is again the same preliminary plat concept brought to you earlier this year, where your recommendation for approval was forwarded to Town Council and resulted in a 3-3 vote. The applicant has returned with a minor plan change, increasing the landscaping along Road 1 West, as well as some evidence of their assured water supply. And the applicant is here in attendance. The 20-acre subject parcel is located at the northeast of the intersection of West Road 3 South and South Road 1 West. This property is located south of an existing slaughterhouse. The subject property was rezoned in January of this year from residential 5-acre minimum, that's AR5, to single-family residential 1-acre minimum, SR1. And it was effectuated via the passage of ordinance number 2023-931. As you can see here, the surrounding area is AR5 with county jurisdiction to the west and multiple family residential and mobile home park directly to the north of the site. In front of you is the applicant's new proposed configuration. As you can see there, it is essentially the same as the requests that came before you earlier this year. The intention is to create the Homestead subdivision, which would consist of 15 1-acre parcels, all of which the applicant is requesting to be serviced by well and septic. The increased landscape buffer is highlighted in green on the western boundary of the subdivision that you see there. A neighborhood meeting was held for this case on August 23rd. 12 neighbors were in attendance, along with the applicant and his agent. Topics of concern included whether the applicant is intending to be on well and septic versus connecting to municipal waters and sewer services. Traffic concerns were expressed, road rate improvements, water quality and drainage management questions as well. As previously mentioned, there is a slaughterhouse that is located to the north of the subject property. The applicant has agreed to include noise and odor disclaimers on the front of their final plat, as well as a required acknowledgement to be signed by the buyers. Sorry, I'm not sure why it's not coming up. Let me get back here. Staff did not receive any written opposition. Staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the Town Council a recommendation of approval for the preliminary plat of approximately 20 acres of land for a 15 1-acre lot subdivision with the conditions of approval found in Attachment A. And here's the conditions of approval for you. And again, the site plan, and we're open to any questions, and the applicant again is here.
We have any questions for staff? Anybody? So, basically, the main difference that I see between the last time we approved this and this time is just the additional landscapes feature in the front. Okay. All right, thank you, Jessica, we may call you back up. Okay, the applicant is here, would he, would you like to speak? All right, you're not required to speak, so good to go, but we may call you up to answer questions later. Okay. Does anybody on the commission have questions for the applicant? All right, so I'm gonna gather up those papers that you have. Okay, so, I'm gonna open up the public comments portion of the meeting for this item only. If you have comments to make, please raise your hand, or I will call for the folks that have already signed slips of paper to come and speak. Please step up to the microphone. We're all adults here, please be polite and concise and respectful. If there's, somebody's already spoken the words that you would like to do, you're welcome to come up and say, yep, I agree with that guy. I keep pretty good notes. And your opinion will be noted on this piece of paper right here. So, with that, you'll have three minutes to speak and we'll go from there. Okay, so... The first one has no name, it just says, "South Road 1 West." Okay, well, Mr. "South Road 1 West," would you like to come up and speak? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Brad McGee and I live on South Road 1 West, actually right across the street from the slaughterhouse. We... This has been coming back and forth and back and forth, and I keep receiving neighborhood notices about the development that's going across the street from where I live. I don't think anybody in the neighborhood is trying to stop, you know, progress and development. We do have two main concerns that were voiced at the neighborhood meeting. Mr. Bates did show up. It would have been really nice to see this at the neighborhood meeting, but we were given nothing. We didn't know what we were doing there. It was literally a waste of everybody's time at the neighborhood meeting. What I will tell you is that I feel that the two main concerns for the neighborhood are, one, the road. It's in really bad shape now. If you drive down there, you have to literally drive through the middle of the street and cross the road. So adding that traffic to that road is a big issue. It is on the half the roads in the Chino and half in the Yavapai. I don't know if the City of Chino and Yavapai can get together and figure out how to fix that road, but we'd be more than happy to, you know, discuss that. The second is the water issue. And it's not as much about the water, is that the tests from the water are very, very high in arsenic. And, you know, those properties are gonna need arsenic remediation if wells are drilled there. I did ask Mr. Bates at the meeting why he wouldn't pull infrastructure to that facility, either from Chino or from Prescott. And the answer that we got at that meeting was that they would not permit him to do that. He applied for it and then that he had turned him down. I then asked him if he would actually do it, if we could get either Chino or Prescott to actually help and work with him to actually pull water and services to that facility, and he in turn said yes. So, I would encourage the City of Chino and the Prescott to work with Mr. Bates to actually bring the right infrastructure to that facility, to eliminate the drilling of the wells that are there, and most of them in that neighborhood are going dry, and pull that infrastructure there. And, you know, those are the main two concerns that came out of that neighborhood meeting. And again, I want to thank you for your time, and I wish we had seen this information when we were at that meeting, but there was no information given out to the local residents during that meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay, the next person who signed up to speak is Ken Cronvold.
Hi there, thank you for the time. I'm Ken Cronvold, I live just kitty corner from the slaughterhouse. And my concern is, one for you, the planning and zoning. I got a notice for this October 3rd meeting, and it says, "This is a request by Jay Bates on behalf of Wright Homes for, to subdivide 20 acres into 15." So, I'm assuming this hasn't been approved. That's your notice. And your agenda showed the same thing. Has he already been approved?
We can't respond at this moment, sir. After the public portion is over, we'll be able to answer some of those questions.
Okay.
That's just the rule that we have to abide by.
All right, the next question is, that's a nice picture. Where are the three 80 or 90-foot power poles that are down the east side of Road 1 West? There are power poles. Now, if he's gonna put an ingress egress there, what are you gonna do with those power poles? They're only about four or five feet off the edge of the roadway. Nobody noticed it? That's about all I have to say, except, water is a big issue everywhere. And I don't think we have enough of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, would anybody else like to speak? All right, I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting. What's that? All right, so, does, I think we probably should have Mr. Marbury, a town engineer, answer a couple of questions, if you're okay with that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, which ones would you like to tackle?
Okay, so, road improvements has come up about this road, half in the county and half in the city. And the project, as usual, has... The developer has provided his part of the road improvements for that area, is that correct?
Can we, Will, can you put it back to the stipulations? The zoning stipulations, please? So, this is what we've got per the zoning stipulations for the improvements. To widen the right-of-way on Road 1 West to 40 feet for the half width. And then 3 South, a half width of 40 feet, because the bottom of that subdivision boundary is the alignment for 3 South. And then the internal streets are 50 feet wide per town standard, so... That's what we've got on there as far as street improvements. As far as the road maintenance, just for information purposes, the right, the town limits actually varies through there, because the road doesn't follow the section line, which are the town limits. But there is a memorandum of an understanding between the county and the town that the town maintains that roadway from 2 South all the way down to Outer Loop. So, the maintenance of the road is fully under the town to maintain that road. And we do so as budgets and schedules allow to maintain that roadway. I would like to pave all the roads in town and get them up to snuff, but we're getting there slowly but surely.
Yeah, for the money available, you're doing what you can do.
Do you want me to address the power poles as well?
Yeah, because I see the power poles on the plot plan, actually.
Right, and the town code requires that normal power poles along a subdivision be undergrounded. If they're over 12,000 kilovolts, then they're called transmission lines and they do not have to be undergrounded. So, I'd have to look at these and see what the, if they're transmission lines or not. That's an exception for transmission lines.
Okay, and they are clearly marked on the plot plan.
Yeah, I can't remember where it, when at the zoning level, but we can look that up and adhere to town code. And if there are, even if they do remain, we need to make adjustments. If the road is blocking a transmission power pole, then obviously the road or the pole one would have to move.
Can we bring that plot plan up, please?
And that'll be part of the technical review process between preliminary plat and final plat.
So, it doesn't end up like Center Street?
That was the town's doing, not any developer, so I don't wanna blame a developer for...
Jesse, can we blow that up and show the road?
If the poles do need to be moved, is that...
Yeah, where the green is at.
...the responsibility of the developer or the town?
The town would not have to pay for this, it's not a town project.
So, the developer would have to pay?
No matter what happens, it would be on the developer, it's his development. So, any expenses would be borne by the developer for this.
Little bit bigger if you can do it.
My mouse isn't working.
Probably needs a new battery.
Yeah. Oh!
Okay. Okay, good, right there. There's a power pole on the corner. And then slide it down further, please, the other way.
They're actually both on there.
There's the other power pole. It looks like it is in... The possible road right-of-way right there.
Right, and if I may, Mr. Chair, just clarify, traveled roadway versus the right-of-way. Power poles are allowed in the right-of-way, but if they conflict with a turning radius or other design criteria, they may need to be moved.
Okay.
For the actual roadway.
So, this is something that would be taken care of when the, when it moves to the next level?
That's correct. The process between preliminary plat and final plat is called technical review, and that's what...
That would address all of these issues.
That's when all of the civil design work and plans are stamped by an engineer and reviewed by the town prior to final plat coming forward.
Okay. And then, as always, the concern about water. The Planning and Zoning Commission has no authority whatsoever over water usage by anybody, anywhere, anyplace, anyhow. Our job, that's not our job, that belongs to other folks. Mr. Bates does, if I read these paperwork right, have an Arizona Department of Water Resources Certificate of Assured Supply, because in this particular case, the state has the jurisdiction over this item. Am I correct?
May I make one clarification to that?
Yes, sir.
If Mr. Bates wished to extend town water and/or sewer, the town would be more than happy to allow that. It's just it would, the cost would be many millions of dollars in this case because of the distances involved. City of Prescott, however, does typically prohibit residential connections outside of their city limits per Prescott City Ordinance. So...
So, they don't want to sell our water back to us then, is what you're telling me?
Not to residents. We have an IGA for some commercial properties along the highway, but they have a city ordinance that prohibits any more expansion of their utility outside the city, and that's up to their council to change that if they wish.
Yeah, they have a pretty strict water program going right now. All right, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so, anybody else have questions for town staff? Mr. Bates, would you please come up, because I have a question for you? Jay Bates, Wright Homes. Thank you, Mr. Bates. There was a question about the arsenic in the water, and can you have a clarification on that for us?
Yes, we were aware of, you know, South, Southwest, Chino, having that arsenic issue. We drilled a well early on and had the water tested. The acceptable limits of arsenic used to be .15, I think it's billions or whatever. They lowered that to .10 here a couple of years back. The arsenic levels in the well that we, the test well that we drilled was .11. And so, we're just a hair over the acceptable limit. So, what we did is we went out and found a filtration system, about $3,500. We then tested the water from the well to see what it would do. It mitigated the arsenic level to zero. So, we've agreed to put in filtration systems in every house, full filtration system for every house in the subdivision. And it'll mitigate the arsenic to zero.
And that's part of your covenants for the subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Right. And where was some discussion about the power poles, which I'm sure you were aware of, and...
It is a transmission line, right? We talked to APS.
Okay, good.
Thank you, I couldn't, it's been so many subdivisions, I couldn't remember off the top of my head.
So, that'll be addressed in some form or fashion on the next level of work?
Yes, sir.
On the final plat. Does anybody else have questions?
What kind of landscaping would be doing?
I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to go by Salida del Sol off of Perkinsville Road. We have three subdivisions there, we just put in the landscape strip. Basically, it's landscape rock, I think we put in 91 trees and 160 or 170 plants, all irrigated. We drilled a separate well for that, for all the landscaping. And it was 50 gallon a minute well, so, and everything's growing good, it's been in about three weeks now. Pretty.
Anybody else have any other questions?
When we first saw this back in May, we requested, a couple of us, if you'd consider putting two acres instead of one acres. Is that just too cost prohibitive?
Into putting what, ma'am?
Putting in two acre lots instead of one acre lot.
Well, we got it zoned for SR1, and, I mean, we do a nice, a nice job. Everything centers around, especially at this time in the economy, around houses that people can afford. Kind of leery about calling it affordable housing, but we've got homes in our subdivision on Salida, 15 out of the 25 will be in the mid-3s. And that's attainable for people like the police department, dual incomes, making 60, 70 a year can afford those homes. And this project here will be the same, it's gonna be, you know, be mid-3s, mid to high 3s, acre lots. When you go to two acre lots, obviously, then it's more, and then it gets out of that range where we can keep people buying houses. You get into the 450, 500 category, it's tough.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, there was a question that I meant to clarify, and Ms. Lineberry, this might be for you. There was a question about what was approved and not approved. And so, the zoning was approved.
Correct.
And this final plat, excuse me, preliminary plat, thank you, was recommended to the town for approval by us the last time it was here.
Correct. And then the council had a tie vote, and according to Roberts Rules of Order, a tie vote is a no vote, because they only had six people in attendance. So, the applicant is allowed to make a change and bring that preliminary plat back, which is what he did.
So, for our position tonight, it was approved to come back here?
You approved it the first time? He submitted a new application, so it's like a brand-new application for you, so you have to review it with fresh eyes.
Okay, so, I was trying to clarify the gentleman's question there.
Right.
All right. I'm sorry. Yes, sir, you've already spoke once. And the rules say I can't let you come up again, I'm sorry. Anybody else like to speak before I close the public portion of the meeting? All right, we're closed with that. So, we've had discussion, we've had information. This has already been through us once before. I would call for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve preliminary plat, PP-2023-02, as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during the hearing and the conditions of approval in Attachment A.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, so this is gonna be a roll call vote. So, Ms. Froberg, would you please call out the commissioners' names?
Pull your microphone down.
Commissioner Welker?
Jeri Ann, pull your microphone down to your face.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes.
Commissioner Maders? Meters?
Matters.
Oh, matters, sorry. Yes. Commissioner Schweitzer?
No.
Commissioner Mazumudio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hasiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. So... I'm gonna give you the opportunity, the choice to say why you voted no, and you don't have to if you don't want, because we've been down this road before.
I don't mind, I'm just staying consistent with my vote. I actually voted against the rezone. I voted against the last preliminary plat and this one for... Since I was against the rezone, I believe that land should have stayed 5 acres, that's SR5. And at minimum, I would like to see residential 2-acre, being that most of the properties around that area are the same size, and I don't like the proximity to the slaughterhouse.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're done with that item, we're gonna... Okay, so we're done with that item. We're gonna move forward to item E. Item E one, staff, prior cases to town council.
All righty. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of commission, Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the town of Chino. Get out of this here real quick. We did have three cases go to town council following Planning Commission. It was the Antelope Valley Apartments rezone, Saddlebutte Estates rezone, and then the Tarpley Zone changer rezone. All three of those were approved by council.
Awesome.
Is all I have for that?
We have a item B, can't get off yet, no.
No, not yet.
We have item B training.
Upcoming trainings? Do we wanna do a training?
Well, we, we need to, we don't have a case for November, so you guys can either get a vacation. From the camp, from the Planning Commission in November, or we can provide some training. Your choice.
Oh, great, so now we gotta vote again.
At least have discussion.
Yeah, I guess before we vote yes or no for training, what, what kind of training would you guys be entertaining?
I think we would be looking at CUPs and the kinds of conditions you can put on them. We would have a piece on ethics.
That would be good. So we'll just go down the line. Commissioner Zamudio?
Yes.
Yes, meaning we would have a meeting and have training.
Yes.
Mr. Switzer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the training.
I guess it's unanimous, so.
Okay.
I mean, I think the training is excellent and, and the ethics part would be, I think, something really good for all of us as a refresher plus some education on it.
You bet.
We'll get it done.
Okay, so this is the part of the meeting where the commission members can have their say about anything they'd like to talk about.
Just one correction, I think I misspoke for the minutes. I said I'd like the land to remain SR five, it's AR five, was AR five, I believe.
Anything else? Commissioner Penn?
Are we?
Need to speak into the microphone.
Are we meeting in November? I believe November seventh is election day here on a Tuesday.
That is correct.
So is there an issue with the commission to meet on election day?
I have no problem.
Okay, I think we're all. Yeah, I think we're okay. I mean, we're all capable of getting up early and going before six o'clock at night, so. All right. Any other thing from the commission? All right, so item three is where the chairman gets to speak. I'm gonna take a pass tonight. Anything I would say would kind of be redone in anyways. And then item E four, for the public to speak, but we don't have any, so. They already had their say and we're done. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, everybody. Thank you, guys, for coming on board.
I think you set a record.